We're going to move on to announcements and presentations. And the first item is Item A, Receive Update on COVID-19 Response Efforts. And we are going to turn it over to Jennifer Giammo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to the Marin City Council. My name is Jennifer Giammo, and I am here presenting to you this evening on behalf of our EOC Public Information Team. We have the presentation up here on the screen, so you should be able to see the cover page now. I have a full but brief agenda this evening. I will quickly go over our current status on the blueprint for a safer economy. I'll go over county statistics, safety, and COVID-19 prevention. We'll provide you with information on city services that are all available, even though our offices are limited, as we have adapted with safety protocols. And of course, we will be available for any questions that you may have at the end of the presentation. And I'll start this evening with the blueprint for a safer economy. Yesterday, Governor Newsom and state health officials lifted the stay-home order for the Bay Area region. The order was lifted due to the increased four-week ICU capacity projections. And while the order was lifted, San Mateo County remains in the purple or the widespread tier on the blueprint for a safer economy. On the screen, you'll see the allowances for indoor operations. Retailers, shopping centers, and malls, they can all operate indoors at 25% capacity. Hair salons, barber shops, personal care services, nail salons can operate indoors with modifications. And restaurants, places of worship, movie theaters, gyms, and fitness centers can all operate outdoors. San Mateo County remains at a high-risk level, and the county metrics on display clearly show that our risk level remains in that purple tier. And so it will take our collective effort to reduce that. Locally in San Mateo County, there are 34,510 positive cases and a total of 356 deaths. This data is from the county health website, and you can see we are at an all-time high since the beginning of COVID. However, on the cases-by-episode date graph here in the middle, there appears to have been a slight dip. This doesn't mean to let your guard down, but it does show that our efforts are making a difference. In San Bruno, we have a total of 1,876 cases, and that is as of last Friday, January 21st. And there is a new metric dashboard that's available on the county health website, and it's related to COVID-19 vaccinations of San Mateo County residents. This is a hot topic and of high interest to many in our community. Currently, there are just under 49,000 individuals in our county that have been vaccinated, and that equates to about 6.3% of our population, in the county, that is. And on the right-hand side of the dashboard, you will see the breakdown, or I should say, who administers the vaccine. So there are several different methods of getting that. That brings me to the next slide, which shows information about the complexity and carefully crafted guideline for distributing the vaccine in an equitable and safe manner. The county is entering into the Phase 1B of the distribution plan, and information about sources and eligibility and other links to providers are all available on the San Mateo County Health Department website, that's smchealth.org. This includes information from Blue Shield, Kaiser, San Mateo Medical Center, Stanford Health, Sutter, PAMF, and for those that are uninsured, and also for veterans. The distribution formula takes many factors into consideration, so it's not an easy and simply point to one site or another. However, it is recommended that residents work directly with their primary care physicians. The state has also launched a notification system that will alert residents that sign up for it once they're eligible within their respective category. And you can sign up for that at myturn.ca.gov. The state has a beta program that's now in operation for Southern California for appointments, and so hopefully that will be expanded soon as well. Next, we will talk about safety. Now that outdoor dining has reopened, it is important to practice outdoor tent safety. This applies to restaurants and at home for those who have tents in their backyards. Tents have the potential of being highly flammable, so no smoking or open flame should be under or near a tent. A portable fire extinguisher should be close by, and exits should not be blocked. If any restaurant or resident has questions about fire safety, please contact the San Bruno Fire Marshal. That number is listed on the screen. It's (650) 616-7093, or by email at gschlice@sanbruno.ca.gov. And how can you resist this cute bear face? Bear faces are cute, but not when they are bear. It's a fun play on words and a friendly reminder to continue to wear masks. Keep your distance and wash your hands. This sign will be placed in parks soon, and just as a friendly reminder to visitors to do their part to keep our community safe while out in public. And next, I'll go over some city services that have been adapted to accommodate our residents during COVID. First being CityNet Services. CityNet continues to provide new installations and follows all COVID safety protocols to protect our employees and residents. Most recently, CityNet team has launched the whole-home Wi-Fi with most advanced Wi-Fi bandwidth everywhere in a respective home that signs up for the services. Appointments and customer service are available and can easily be reached at (650) 616-3100. And while our San Bruno Library remains closed to the public, the library team will soon resume curbside pickup. This is a really popular program, so it will begin on February 1st. You can visit curbside.sanbrunolibrary.org, or you can call them directly to schedule a pickup or learn more about the program. That's at (616) 707-8. This and other library programs are available on the library website, which is www.sanbrunolibrary.org, or the general line that I just mentioned, 7078 is applicable. One of the popular programs that is scheduled to be held in February is Black History Month. You will find recommended lists of books and documentaries that acknowledge the African-American history in the United States. Material is available through the curbside pickup program, and the recommendations are appropriate for kids, teens, and adults alike. So it's a fun way to learn and spend some family time together. And when you're ready to put your book down and dance, the traditional father-and-daughter dance has adapted to a dance competition for all ages. Congorge choreograph or wing your dance, but whatever you do, get it recorded and submitted to our recreation services team. That's at sbcs@sanbruno.ca.gov. That is an ongoing event, so it's anytime between February 1st and February 27th. And while this is not a city service, the slide on the screen supports our local businesses, and so I want to make sure that I get an opportunity to share it. The California Small Business Relief Grant opens up for Round 2 on February 2nd. So it's a short, one-week-ish window, but approval notifications will be on a rolling basis. And applicants that apply during the first round and didn't get approved but are still eligible do not need to reapply. So this is a great opportunity for small businesses that are in need of funding. And what's not on the screen, because it was released earlier this afternoon, but worth noting to the community, the county announced a new restaurant brewery and winery relief program. It's another funding opportunity for those impacted by COVID-19, and specifically restaurants. That application period will or is expected to open in the middle of February, and so that's something that restaurant owners should pay attention to. Information will be released on smcstrong.org, another resource for our local businesses. And lastly, please stay connected. Sign up for our SMC Alert notifications, follow our official city account on social media, and that includes Nextdoor, Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your report. Any questions from colleagues? Not seeing any, we'll all, the council will thank you and staff for all your efforts and work. And we're going to move on to, again, under announcements and presentations, Item B, Presentation on a Standardized Evacuation Planning Project. As our fire chief will be leading this.
Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Member of the Council, REA, your fire chief. I'm here this evening to introduce the council and our residents to what we call the Standardized Evacuation Planning Project. You might be asking the question, what is the standardized evacuation project? Well, this is a county-wide project that's really been developed to develop emergency evacuation zones to aid in times of need and disasters, when we have very little time to move people out of harm's way. And this project itself was funded by the County of San Mateo, and it was developed by all fire and law enforcement agencies across San Mateo County, by those law enforcement and fire agencies, and also by a contractor that the county hired called ZoneHaven. So our agenda for the presentation tonight is we're going to review what the wildfire problem is. I say wildfire, and that's kind of the nexus of how this project was developed. But the same platform can be used in other situations that require us to move people rapidly. And you'll see the value of that as we move along in the presentation. We're going to provide an overview of that standardized evacuation project in San Mateo County and talk about some of our next steps in implementing the project and create an opportunity for the council to ask questions. So the wildfire problem. In today's day, you know, we have fast-moving wildfires, and that really has highlighted the need for a change in the way we move people in a mass wave during these fast-moving emergencies. Some of the recent fires in recent years, the Tubbs Fire that impacted Napa, Sonoma, and Lake Counties, and the Camp Fire in Butte County have been really highlighting the awareness and need to move people quickly in these type of events. And historically, these evacuations were planned on, honestly, the hood of a pickup truck. Local battalion chief, who's in charge of those first phases of the incident, would literally get on the hood of a pickup truck, drawing, hand-drawing on a map, and trying to articulate and communicate those areas that they need to evacuate to somebody to get the message out to the public. And that is obviously a slow, arduous process that's not very effective. And in today's modern world, with some of the fires moving as fast as they do, it's really problematic. So we needed to think of a new way. So some of our firefighting in what we call the initial attack phases, and that's that first phase of putting out these fires, is really not effective. So we really work because the resources are not there to support the incident in the early phases. We really are in a mode where we're moving people out of harm's way. So this requires multi-agency coordination and command and control, so between law enforcement, fire, and public safety officials. It requires evacuation earlier in larger areas, because these incidents are really so fast-moving. Traffic congestion is now, you know, it's really important that we coordinate some of the issues so we can move traffic in a single direction, so we don't have traffic that opposes each other and causes congestion and accidents. And we also need to address the vulnerable populations in our communities. This picture itself is just a highlight from a wildland perspective. Something we never really thought of before in the past is we can have a small fire, but if it gets into buildings, now the buildings are considered a fuel. So this is a picture from the Tubbs Fire in Santa Rosa, the north end of Santa Rosa. I actually went to this fire, and the top was prior to the incident itself. And you can see that the entire neighborhood is just foundations. So we've really changed the model with climate change and things like that in these fast-moving fires, where it's important for us to be able to move people quickly, to get them out of harm's way. And these are things that, you know, 20, 30 years ago were very rare events, and now they've become common occurrences. So many agencies throughout the state are suffering the same problem, right? They have the same issues that we do. San Mateo County was the first to implement the ZoneHaven platform to standardize our emergency evacuations. Other counties are following our lead, including Santa Cruz, Sonoma, Napa, Marin, Yuba, and other small jurisdictions throughout the state of California. The next slide you have before you is really meant to talk about the way the public gets evacuation information. We have a variety of ways we message the public. We have our regular 911 and reverse 911 systems. We use mass notification systems like SMC Alert, IPaaS, and WIA, social media, direct contact from first responders. We try to use websites and other news media outlets to get the information out. But again, it's difficult to, you know, quickly move that information to the public. And these traditional methods of social media and press releases are slow and don't really adequately address the need. So this newer technology has really been developed to work with some of these opt-in and non-opt-in systems like IPaaS and WIA, the Integrated Public Alert Warning System, and what they call WIA, or the Wireless Emergency Alerts. And those are the same things like you would get an Amber Alert on your cell phone. So local, state, and local law enforcement agencies and fire agencies typically work together to collaborate during these events. And it's important that we have this unified approach to dealing with these emergencies. The standard evacuation project really creates a seamless platform where public safety agencies can coordinate. And the public-facing side of the standard evacuation's planning platform, which is developed, provides a single place where citizens can view areas that are being evacuated. And in fact, the same platform, ZoneHaven, is being used today as we speak with the mudslide and debris flow that are occurring from the CZU complex. If anybody's seen the SMC Alert that's gone out today evacuating residents on the south coast of San Mateo County. So I talked about conducting these evacuation zones on the hood of a pickup truck. These are pretty ad hoc ways to do business. Each event is unique and decided really rapidly, you know, as quick as we can put the plan together. But again, we have to articulate that to the public. So the idea here is to use, instead of going from the major incident occurring, as you see on the left of the screen, going down to a planning session, and then pushing it out through those platforms, the idea really here is to have a one-click platform. So this one-click platform is a platform that all agencies could use to coordinate evacuations with stakeholders. And what we're really attempting to do here is use an opportunity when we have discretionary time, not during an emergency, to plan out these zones, pre-identify them, pre-identify critical infrastructure in our communities, and use those things and basically put them into play when the emergency happens. So this solution, it will work beyond San Mateo County. Those other counties that I spoke about earlier are already developing these platforms, and we see their evacuation zones, and they can see ours. It's a real-time map-based platform that allows everybody to see, including the public, where the evacuation zones are to avoid confusion. It's a tool that's integrated with existing information channels. All those same platforms we would normally use are tied directly into this platform. It's really meant to reduce the complications and time it takes to get public moving faster towards evacuation. And it's really designed to put and aggregate local knowledge. So if a fire department from another jurisdiction comes here to assist us in evacuations, they can see all of the critical infrastructure, the number of residents in the neighborhood, and the evacuation routes that we have pre-identified. And this tool has been, again, made available to the public, and it's going to allow for those mutually resources to also know our evacuation routes. So when I said one-click platform, the other slide I had previously, you noticed, was very similar. But what we're doing now is we have the emergency on the left. We're going to utilize the ZoneHaven standardized evacuation platform, which you see there on the right. It's going to automatically integrate with those other alerting systems and make the notification to the public. And that can be done by the incident commander in the field. And I'm talking about the very first battalion chief, sergeant from the police department that arrives on scene. We have firefighters that have credentials to the system and can make those notifications and initiate those evacuations, as well as our police department personnel. So the idea of this evening's presentation would just to warm up the council and the public to the idea of the ZoneHaven platform and these emergency evacuations. We are, for next steps, working on developing a, what they call a "know your zone" campaign. It's really identified to, or developed to, train the public on knowing which zone they live in, where their evacuation routes are. And then we're working on a plan for community messaging and developing a video explaining the evacuation process and the platform, and kind of next steps for that process in case there's a large-scale emergency. And again, this is not just for fires, it's not just for wildfires, it's for all different types of emergencies. So with that said, I'd like to turn it over briefly to Chief Ryan Johansson for some closing comments and a wrap-up.
Please, Chief Johansson.
Thank you, Ari. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and members of the community. I'll be brief, but just a few points to add to the wonderful presentation that our fire chief has already provided to you. Both, I have a couple of things to add to this, because I've experienced use of this system both professionally and personally. My family was evacuated in the recent fires in the Santa Cruz Mountains, and I can tell you that it was a totally different experience having firsthand information, real-time information up to date, letting us know when it was time to leave, when we were in the warning zone, when it was time to actually leave now. And then, once we were gone from our house for almost two weeks, having regular updated information about when we were going to be able to come back. And it's kind of important to understand that none of this existed before these teams of firefighters got together and put this system together. I mean, you were really quite in the dark, and you were waiting for mass media to pick up these incidents. And, you know, if it's a relatively small incident, or they're going on all over the place, often, you know, smaller jurisdictions like ours don't get that mass media attention where you can rely on the information you're getting in the news. So personally, I found it hugely valuable. I've in fact been using it for the last 24 hours, because I'm, again, in an evacuation warning zone due to the debris slides up here in Santa Cruz. And I can really tell you firsthand, it's a really phenomenal program. From the police perspective, just to highlight a couple of things that our fire chief already told you, right? Evacuations are actually really quite complicated because of all these different entities that are working together. And as a law enforcement entity showing up to these incidents, we're going to facilitate almost every single evacuated residence or business, or every person that needs to be moved. But it's going to be at the direction of fire, because they're the experts who know what direction these fires and threats are moving in. And so if you think about how that works practically, you saw some pictures there. Like, we all have to show up at one location, have a fire battalion chief, or captain, or expert there tell us where we're evacuating and in what order. And then you have to deploy a bunch of police officers who are not firefighters and don't know how to track these hazards and know where the greatest risk is at any given moment to go out and facilitate those evacuations. Well, now, with a click of a button, right, this fire battalion chief can send information to all of the police officers without them having to be centrally located at this command post telling them, here's the evacuation plan, here's the priority zones. And at the same time, instead of waiting for an officer to literally knock on your door and tell you to leave, you're going to get a notification telling you, hey, please evacuate. So now, police are catching those that don't get caught in that initial net, instead of being the only source of reliable information telling you to get out of your home. And even if you have a massive response of officers, I mean, Ari told you that he responded to some of the larger fires. I worked the fires in Sonoma and the fires out in Paradise. And the massive undertaking of an evacuation is terrifying, because you know that every house you don't get to is potential life loss. And this is a really revolutionary system that we're very fortunate to have. And I think that our fire chief kind of understates the amount of work that he and his staff put into getting together to make sure that the real work goes into the front end, right? What's basically happened is evacuation planning on a very robust level has now occurred in a vacuum, where you can actually slow down and not be pressured by an actual live incident and think constructively, not just about who to evacuate and when, but what are the ingress and egress routes? And for me, from the law enforcement perspective, that's the most important component. When you look at a fire like in Paradise, there was a lot of life loss while people were trying to get out. And that's really terrifying, right? Well, what Ari and his teams have done now is gotten together with PD and said, how do we give people different evacuation routes from the same neighborhoods to ensure they don't bottleneck all into one intersection and can't get out when they need to? And so this really has taken a lot of pre-planning into saying, hey, here's a giant area. For instance, we can take Glenview for obvious reasons. And it divides it up and says, these residents will flee this way in this type of an emergency. These residents will flee this way. And that information comes through in that notification. So not just a get out, but a get out and here's the way to get out. It's really, really quite powerful and really changes drastically the way that we do things. The other piece about it is it's scalable. Most evacuations, we've been kind of hesitant to use in the past, because it can create a lot of alarm, or we have to do something much larger scale than what's necessary for a given emergency. And this gives us a very scalable solution that says something very simple, like a residential gas leak, we can use this system to facilitate a really small evacuation, or to facilitate evacuation of the entire city in a much larger event, like maybe an emergency up at our water treatment plant. So really, really, a ton of great work that went in here, very much led by fire and their staff, with some participation from PD when it was needed. We're really, really excited about it, and I think that is something that, bottom line, is going to save lives when, as we know all too well, the inevitable events come to our little town. So with that, I will close up, and I think the fire chief's probably your best resource for questions, but I'll remain on in case there's anything I can help with.
Thank you, Chiefs. Any questions or comments from colleagues? Vice Mayor Medina.
Yeah, yeah, this sounds really great. When will we test this?
Chief?
When will we test it? So that's going to be part of the process. COVID is obviously going to play an important piece of it. Communities across the Bay Area region have actually, just prior to COVID, started doing some testing. And our plan would be to kind of get primed up for fire season, next fire season, truthfully. It's probably going to be our best bet. And there's opportunities, I'm working with another agency across the bay to kind of do a run-through of what they've done of virtual evacuation notice, to kind of warm up again the community and kind of get them in the routine of knowing this platform, knowing where it is, how to get to it, and how they're going to interact. So my hope is to get something done by midsummer.
Thank you. Seeing no one else on council, once again, Chiefs, thank you for your comments. Please, Chief, thank you for expressing what you've dealt with on a personal basis, because it's very interesting to see it in both ends, as it worked for your family, but as it's going to work for our community and our county. And Fire Chief, I know you've put a lot of time and effort, and your team has, and I know this is one of those things that you enjoy, and you enjoy this technical, and it really, from what I've seen and what the emergency services council will see, it is quite, it's come a long way, it will save lives, bottom line. So thank you to both. We're going to go ahead and move on to Item C, Receive Community Grant from the San Bruno Community Foundation. As we're going to breathe, Leslie.
Actually, we are bringing over Emily Roberts, who is, yes, so I'm bringing her over now.
Roberts, Madam Chair.
Yeah, hello all, good evening. Honorable Mayor and council members and members of the public. Happy to be here, I'm Emily Roberts, the current president of the San Bruno Community Foundation. And as stated, I'm here tonight to share some good news regarding the San Bruno Community Foundation Grants Program. As you all know, council members I know know, but perhaps as a reminder to the public, the city council created the foundation to administer the $70 million in restitution funds received from PJNE as part of the settlement from the 2010 gas pipeline explosion. And the foundation created the community grants fund in order to share some of those restitution funds back with local organizations, including programs of the city of San Bruno that work to support and sustain the San Bruno community and are doing important work to improve the quality of life here in our city. And so this year, the foundation is funding two community grants to the city, one to support the city's library, and one to fund the purchase of lightweight and portable lifesaving tools and equipment for the city's fire departments. Both departments and needs well highlighted in earlier presentations tonight, in fact. These programs were among a competitive pool of grant applications that the foundation received by the community grant September 30th deadline. And a review panel of volunteers, including community members and individuals with nonprofit and grant-making experience, reviewed and evaluated the applications, ultimately recommending the board-approved grants to 23 projects. Our board approved those 23 grants totaling $300,000. Our board approved those 23 grants totaling $300,000 on December 2nd. We are thrilled that YouTube, Google.org, has also partnered with the foundation on the Community Grants Fund yet again this year, and has provided $100,000 of the total $300,000 in grant funds being distributed. So with that, and on behalf of the San Bruno Community Foundation this evening, I'm pleased to present the city of San Bruno with two grant checks. I'm doing the sweepstakes style with the virtual format we have here. So here is your faux first check that I'll hold up. And the first is in the amount of $10,000, and will enable the San Bruno library to purchase more than 100 additional titles of popular ebook and e-audio materials available for San Bruno residents, and to enable the library to provide curriculum support to San Bruno Park School district teachers through a three-year Tumble Books subscription. In a time of need for online resources during the pandemic, we know there will be even more reading opportunities provided by the library for all San Bruno residents sheltering at home. And the second, which is in the amount of $15,000, right here, will support a fireline paramedic program through the purchase of lifesaving tools and equipment to outfit two fireline paramedic kits, and the implementation of training for San Bruno Fire Department personnel for use in more remote or rugged locations within the city and regionally, such as in the case of wildfires. And in the wake of so many fire emergencies in 2020, it's our hope that these additions will also assist in saving more lives. So with that, congratulations on your two successful proposals. We look forward to hearing about the benefits of both to the residents and the larger community, and I just want to thank you again.
Again, thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it. And again, the city, the staff, all of us, or the council, very appreciative for what the board does, and we appreciate the grants that have been awarded to the city, which will help this community. And as was said many times before, you know, this is the element that something good has come from a tragedy and a disaster that helps many folks going into the future. So please pass our thanks and appreciation from the council and staff to the board.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll absolutely do that. I'm grateful for your support.
Okay. Have a good evening. Stay dry.